This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Finance for January. It's January 17th at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call our regular meeting to order, please. First matter of business for the Board is the minutes of our meeting from December 20th. Any comments or questions on those minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I abstain.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, under all business, the budget process has started. The members have in their packets a letter from the members of our Board of Selectmen, written by Mr. Frida on their behalf. And amongst other things, it is asking that the Board of Finance do their best to present a budget to the public with no more than a one mil tax increase.
Did it come with any suggested cuts? All right, okay, we'll do the dirty work.
Thank you, Mike. Another item before we move on, there is now a Board of Finance email. It is on the town's website, under the Board of Finance. I did mention it at this past Saturday's workshop, I will mention it again, and at subsequent meetings. I'll try and do this slowly, but it's Board of Finance. Capitalization doesn't matter, could be either lower or uppercase, but Board of Finance@NorthHaven, one word, dash CT.gov. Email sent to that address will be forwarded to the chairman, who will share that as correspondence at our subsequent meetings with the members of the Board. The only thing I'll say about the budget is, following tonight's regular meeting, we will have a presentation which is scheduled for 7 o'clock from the Public Works Department. Thank you. Let's move on to new business. Let's move on, let's start with the revenue report for the town. Ingrid did have a note on the members' copies, community service fees, which is showing a little light in terms of percentage and the overall collection rate. Would you like to comment on that for us, please, Ingrid?
Yes, that is going to be... They're catching up, and you will see that in the coming months. They're catching up on billing, so we should get a check soon for that.
Yeah, I think I raised that issue last month because it was 27.7% at the end of November, and now it's up to a little over 37%, which is great, but we are still talking about the... This report is through the end of December, so that's the first full six months, so six out of 12 should be around 50% ideally for each one of these departments.
Yeah, we're starting to catch up now. We'll start seeing that.
Ingrid, the department used to produce a monthly report of collections, and it was a multi-year report, came on like a legal sheet, which we haven't seen in a while, but it was always good because I did notice that our tax collections are 66.6%, which struck me as high, but do you have any reference point for that compared to, say, last year?
It's the same as last year.
It is, okay.
Yeah, we'll get the bulk, and in February we'll get most of it. It will be like 80%, 90%.
If I can comment on that. What happens at the end of December is a lot of people want to pay the tax, their taxes, they're due in January, so we get, in the last 10 days in December, we get a lot of people that pay it before January 1st.
Because they want to claim the revenue.
Exactly.
Members, other questions on the revenues?
The short-term interest, do we get that paid on an even amount throughout the year, or is it...
No, we were backed up last month a little bit in recording that, and then every month we get a dependent.
Right, every month we get it.
Yep.
That's a nice chunk of change.
Yep, this was a catch-up of like a couple months.
Okay. All right, beautiful. Nice to have a revenue item come in over budget.
Oh, we're still, yeah, we're still way ahead of budget there.
Yeah.
Any other revenue questions before we move on to expenses?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Well, first of all, first a comment, I'm just glad that we received the first quarter of the ECS grant, so that should be supplementing, or at least subsidizing some of our educational funding. And as far as tax relief for veterans, I'm assuming that that's a one-time payment? Is that correct, or should we be expecting any more for that? It's just a little bit shy of what we had budgeted for.
Yeah, I think that's... I can check that for you, but I think that's a one-time payment.
Okay. And I think I had requested before if we could at some point receive a breakdown of the town miscellaneous receipts, that would be great. I had one question regarding town revenue departments, the last page of the revenue report, under cemeteries. Cemeteries represents both a source of revenue for the town, but it's also, as a department, it is also a series of expenditure line items. And I just happened to go on the town's website, and I noticed that the cemetery commission hasn't met since October of 2019. And I'm just wondering, again, since this is a flow of money that does impact this Board of Finance and our reports, I wondered if Mr. Frida could comment on what the plan is there, because I'm assuming you just met with someone from that group, and appointed a chair, and went through the normal beginning-of-the-year process.
No, we haven't gotten to that yet.
Oh, okay.
But the cemetery commission is an advisory commission. They don't generate revenue, they may make a recommendation, but they haven't met because we have some open seats. And the reality of the situation is, we manage the revenue here, and we manage the expenses here. So the cemetery commission doesn't manage that, we do. They get updates from us when those commission meetings take place. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be filling the positions, but we've got people that don't want to sit on that commission, one person resigned, so when I go to reorganize that commission later this month, then we'll address it at that point.
I actually looked at this item, Nancy, a little bit differently than you did, but I actually looked at the expense. This is quite an income generator for a small item. There's almost no expense, at least in the reports for this item.
So there's certainly, you know, grounds upkeep and so forth that is in the expense reports, so... And again, to your point, Mike, I think that, I do know of the person that resigned from the cemetery commission, and he resigned because they weren't meeting, so again, it becomes a little bit of a catch-22, but I would love to see that particular commission be able to provide some input as representatives of our town. And the community service fees, I think you've already addressed that, and so that's all the questions that I have for revenue.
Thank you. Okay, any else from the members on revenue? If not, move on to expenses.
I think most of what we see here, we've already talked about last month, or... With some of these line items that we've talked about, they're pretty much still the same as it was last month.
Yeah, I had a question on page seven, again, related to central facilities, but it's the same question that we ask on a monthly basis, but in this particular case, there are some, you know, pretty substantial numbers here. Under maintenance and repairs of both town buildings and maintenance and repair of rental property, there are some big monthly expenditures and encumbrances. Is there anything that, any light that you can shed on this, these particular costs?
Sure. In the maintenance and repairs of the town building, we had to repair a boiler for $5,000 for the town hall, we'd had some roof and drained gutters that had to be serviced and repaired. There is a lot of stuff going on in our buildings. Also, in our rental properties, a lot of furnaces, we had to replace a furnace in 15 Broadway. It was leaking carbon monoxide, we had a $5,000 expense there. We also had to replace a furnace from gas, from oil to gas as an emergency in the Knights of Columbus, that was $7,000, and we'd had many other repairs. Chimney repairs in 1790, AC repair in 1790, Broadway. So there has been a lot of emergency repairs this year with the furnaces and AC systems.
Okay.
Ingrid, on the prior page, page six, we do have an item that has nothing budgeted, not budgeted, but sorry, expense, which is the personal policy contract obligations, which I know is an item we've talked before, but it's zero so far this year?
Yes, this is... This is because Fire Department, for the Fire Department contract, they're retros. They're going to be paid in February, so we will see that expense in February.
When did the contract start?
It's, this is retro paid for the year.
All of it, all of 2020?
So it was settled all the way back to July.
To July of 2020, right.
Right, and this is for benefits.
And pay?
Right.
Benefits and pay?
Pay will be on their line, we did calculate it. If you see on Fire, if you go to Fire, there are lines.
Oh, this is just benefits, you're saying?
Yes, for this year, yes.
I gotta find the line, it's in the back of the page. If I had a question on Medicare Part B. Sorry, it's on page 17, Ingrid.
This line is going to run over a little bit this year, the government increased the rates mid-year, so that's why it's over 50%.
And is this to our current employees or retirees?
This is retirees.
On page 12, the... Under sanitation, I think we've talked about this before, but I'm just wondering, the condo trash pickup, is that just a flat number, and it's not going to change, or we're expecting that to keep increasing?
It changes every year.
No, 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 I'm saying for the remainder of this year, because it's currently at 100%.
It's annual pay.
It's just a one-time, that's what I thought, yeah. Okay. And the leaf, on that same page, the leaf composting, we have an encumbrance of about $10,000, is that...
Yes, there was a required permit. It's every 10 years, and it was $13,000.
Okay.
So for the general public watching, let me just sum it up for you on the expenditures. I know there may be some other questions, but at 50% of time elapsed in this fiscal year, we're about 52% expended, which includes over $7 million of front-loaded expenses that are non-recurring expenses in the back half of this fiscal year. So we're right on track on revenue, we're ahead of expenses when you consider all of the over $7 million that's already front-loaded. So we just have to watch it, Ingrid, myself, and Rich downstairs, we watch this every day, we manage it every day, so that's where we are.
There are about 11 departments that are over the 50% mark, but I agree with you, Mike, I think in many of those cases, it's encumbrances that are built in, and so...
Contracts, yeah.
That should be...
Contractual.
Should track down over time.
They're also barely over the 50%, so I think everybody's doing a really good job.
Tim, the, on the last page, on 18, the fire engine lease, do we pay that one time later on in the fiscal year?
No, they...
And of course, we see a $12,000 credit.
Right, that was a misclassification of an invoice. Because that belonged to the lease that the chief spoke about on Saturday, that's the pumper, so that goes in his maintenance line. This one is the one that was ordered that has not arrived yet.
Oh, okay, so the leases for equipment hasn't arrived yet, and the $12,000...
Yes.
And the $12,000 was a maintenance issue that was just put in the...
It's leasing of a pumper, a separate...
Right. So when the chief, he mentioned Saturday, Mike, when the chief couldn't get these units in on time, he's leasing, he mentioned it's on a month-to-month basis on Saturday, he's leasing another truck. When these come in, he can release that without any payment penalty, because it's on a month-to-month. You following me?
Well, so the $12,000 credit is for what?
It was missing application, that was the lease payment for the truck, which was mistakenly applied to this lease.
Right.
Thank you. Okay.
And I think to answer your other question, generally, it's one lease payment a year, and it's usually towards the end of the year, right?
Yes, but we have not gotten the equipment yet, so that has been encumbered into a line that when we get the equipment, it will be paid.
Thank you very much.
Further questions on our expenses for the town side? We do have some reports from the Board of Ed. We do not yet, still have the medical insurance and special fund reserves. Nancy, I think it was you, you asked about the cafeteria fund, that has been requested, and unfortunately, with staffing issues, we still have not been able to get that. They do actually mention in their cover sheet that they are still working on the reconciling of reserve accounts. But having said that, and if there's any questions on the Board of Ed side.
They are under budget process right now, they are very short-staffed, they're asking for your patience on these reports. They have provided to you the same reports that they have provided to the Board. He is going to provide everything, but he just needs more time, he is extremely short in staff.
I kind of assume, and this came up last month, Ingrid, that...
Even in the line for personnel, I did talk to him about that, it says 19%, but that is because it hasn't been upgraded, it's current.
Well, that's what I was going to say, when you look at some of these lines, they look, to me, obviously low, that they're behind in booking their entries.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Actually, I compared this month's reports to those that we received last month, and the grants are completely unchanged.
Right, they are behind on booking entries.
And the actual budget report, if you compare the, you know, the total, the bottom-line figure, I think it was 48.5% used last month and 48.7% used this month. So I find that hard to believe, since their budget is probably about $5 million, not $500,000, per month, so I don't think that we can even discuss this at all.
Yeah, we can't really, so... Do they anticipate...
He's in budget season right now, he's hoping by next month, everyone's gonna be able to provide the reports.
What positions are they actually missing in their finance department?
Their payroll person, she left, there was somebody else that left too, and... Yeah, very short-staffed.
Okay.
Further questions on the reports, be they town or Board of Ed? If not, like a motion on any reports, please.
Make a motion to...
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, that brings us to the public comments section of our meeting. Would any of the members of public like to make a comment? Sally Blamey.
I'm Sally Blamey, 5 Blossom Drive, I'll be very brief. This is my 11th budget process as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I just wanted to comment on the letter that you all got from the Board of Selectmen. That letter sometimes is joked about, as it's not important, not significant. You know, we do our best on, when we meet the first week of January with limited information, especially on the revenue side, but this year, I just want to stress that I feel very strongly about the one mil. Last year, I just want to remind you all, I don't think I need to, but I'm going to anyway, we raised the taxes by 1.94, almost two mils. You know, I am very wary for many of our folks on fixed incomes and people struggling with inflation, we really have to be cognizant. Obviously, a lot depends on revenue, as to how sharp you're going to have to sharpen your pencils, and I assure you, Mr. Hallihan, I will have cut suggestions after all of the workshops are completed, but I really hope that we all can work together to maintain our services, but really keep in mind the increase last year, and try to take our letter a little more seriously with the one mil increase. Let's keep our fingers crossed on the revenue, that's an unknown right now, I'm sure Mr. Frida will keep us informed on that. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Mike, do you have something else?
Just to tie into Sally's point on the revenue, I received a call last week from Governor Lamont, who wanted to have lunch with me. So I met with the governor for lunch, and it looks like, other than ECS, it looks like the municipalities are going to be flat-funded this year on the town side. Now, the numbers aren't really in yet, but that's the way it looks right now. A bump on ECS, flat funding on the town side. And we, through the boards that I sit on, will be monitoring that, so as soon as we hear what it is, we will let this Board of Finance know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And as a follow-up to that, Mike, I discussed this with Tim earlier, as soon as we could get the grand list report from the assessor, that would be very helpful in terms of getting a sense for how a mil would translate, given all other assumptions about revenue and the grand list, how that would translate into a dollar amount.
Yeah, that'll be coming shortly, because by state law, we have to, all municipalities have to get that grand list in by, I think it's January 30th this year, so...
31st, yes, it is.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public, I should say? Okay. All right, with that then, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, and then for those here and at home, we will take one minute, but we will start our workshop momentarily. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. This is a Board of Finance workshop for January 17th. Tonight, we're going to discuss Public Works, excuse me, including Streets and Roads, and with us tonight, so far anyways, we have Lynn Sadowski.
And Andy Bevelaffa.
And Andy, thank you.
And also Elio Floriano, our building official, in case anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
So if I could first wish you all Happy New Year, and if I could get you to take a look at page 29 in your budget packets, and on page 29, I'll walk you through what we have proposed. We'll start with Land Use Administration. In Land Use Administration, there are no changes. What is shown, I think on the document you see, this, right after the salaries, which is typical contractual information, you'll see a Commission Secretary for three boards, that $4,000 was to be carried into that line, it was missing, just, I think it's just a typo, and what below it is supposed to be $10,000. It was just added together for 14 to show a 40% increase, but it is in that case, it's $4,000 for the Commission Board Secretaries, so no increase, and $10,000 for overtime, which would be no increase there as well, it's the same as last year. We do have a slight increase on office supplies and equipment from $2,500 to $4,500 in land use, and we are supporting the Planning and Zoning Commission, Inland Wetlands Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we, if you look through those portions of this page, there are no changes, no increases made to any of this. Before I go to page 30, does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. On page 30, we have proposed one personnel addition, it is for the Assistant Building Official. As of right now, we have a full-time building official, Elio Floriano, who's sitting in front of you, we have an Assistant Building Official who just passed his six-month probationary term, James Cook, doing great, and we're proposing a second Assistant Building Official, and you might say, why are we doing that? If you look into the Building Inspector Permits and that line on that first section, under consultants, the actual fees for this year was $167,720 for consultants. Our budget was $40,000, we went over it significantly, as we do year after year, and we are proposing to bring on a full-time person, that would give us some continuity as well. Right now, if, for example, Lori Jean, I'll use you as an example, you're building an addition on your home, and you call our office, you may get our building official, you may get our assistant, or you may get one of our contracted building officials, we have three of them. We are so busy in building, which is a great problem to have, but to fill that gap, we've been using a lot of consultants. So we are proposing a full-time person. We have been watching the consultant line for years now, and it is the best use of taxpayers' dollars, in our opinion, to add on a staff member and cut back on the consultants. So that's what you're seeing with the Personnel Full-Time Line, which has gone up 29%, and we're proposing to eventually eliminate any increases in consultants, so even reduce the $40,000 that we're using. But right now, we are all hands on deck, which is a great issue for us to have. I think to date, we've already, we're halfway through the fiscal year, we're already over 1,500 permits, and I think, what, Elio, we're up around $1.1 million in permit fees between us and also the Fire Department, so we're collecting for both. So it's a good thing for us to have, it shows the economic development is really, you know, working out for us, and we haven't really seen much of a slowdown, which is a great thing. Thank you, Mike, you have a lot to do with that, so he pounds the pavement, and we keep busy as a result. And we've seen that pattern for, I don't know, Elio, you and I have been working together 15 years, so 15 years, it has not changed, it's just been steadily, steadily increasing, or now it's about the same as it was last year, it's excellent, we're very fortunate. Permitting software has gone up, part of that is the fact that we're using now, you know, technology in the field, we're using iPads, we're going out and trying to do as much permitting as we can in the field. We're also including folks like Andy for Town Engineer, Laura for Zoning Enforcement, we're bringing on Alan from Land Use Administration, and the folks, not only the full-time folks for permitting and building, but also the consultants also use it as well. So we have individual licenses, and they cost a lot of money. Engineering, we have a, basically, it's contractual personnel full-time, but we had a part-time position there for a long time, our part-time clerical, we had a clerical person retire in Public Works, removing the part-time clerical that has been working with... part-time clerical that has been working with Andy in engineering over to us to cover our retirement, and bringing back the full-time person in engineering that we had for clerical. So you see a slight increase in that.
I just want to make sure I understand that, Lynn. Would you just mind telling me that again?
Yeah.
It sounded like a half-person, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so, Tim, we had a full-time person in engineering, and she wanted to retire. And we talked her into working part-time for us instead. So she worked for us part-time for a long time.
Yeah.
And she wants to stay part-time, but we really need a full-time person in engineering, a clerical person. So the line was there for us to use. So we recently, in Public Works Section, had a woman that worked with us for 20 years, Marilyn Mooney, she's probably watching right now on TV. She did a great job for us. She just retired. And she was excellent, but we also need her in Public Works to back us up as well. So we're moving the woman in Engineering, Lori Henson, who is also terrific. She's a taxpayer as well, she's probably watching tonight, and we're going to move her to Public Works and fill up, fill the position as a full-time clerical. It's called a clerk, Senior Clerk Labor Grade Four.
So you had a person that was part-time that retired?
Correct. And so that, that money was there.
Okay.
Yeah, in Engineering.
So is that position being filled or not?
We will. We will. You know, we talked with Finance, and we said we can wait until the new fiscal year, wait on this budget. We're trying to help where we can. So as of July 1, we will look to fill that person again as a full-time person, move the person who's sitting in the part-time role over to Public Works.
Okay, so in the current budget, was the part-time person budgeted as part-time or budgeted as full-time?
She was budgeted, in the current budget, she was budgeted as part-time.
Okay, so...
Now she's going back to full-time.
Okay. So we do have a, basically, a part-timer going to a full-time here?
Yeah, I guess, if you look at...
And eliminating a part-time.
And elim, yeah, well, we're, yeah, because we're backfilling on our end, yes.
Well, the net effect is, I think, you have a part-timer, she's retiring, we're having a full-time person take that person's place. So we're picking up a half FTE away, correct?
Yeah, correct, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, that sounds convoluted, but yes. And like I said, in Public Works, there's, you won't see any changes in that. That's still the same. And I know folks have asked me in the past, will the MS4 stormwater fees, the fees associated with what we call industrial stormwater, the fees associated with the sampling of the landfill, will they ever go away? And unfortunately, my answer is no. So as long as there's a regulatory agency, the Connecticut DEEP, we have consultant fees to do all kinds of sampling for us, all kinds of inspections. And these are not just for stormwater in general in the town, but it's also for the recycling center, the transfer station, the DPW garage. We have all kinds of requirements. The landfill that we closed in 1995, we still have to sample it quarterly, and we have a 30-year permit, and at the end of 30 years, they'll give us another 30-year permit. So it just goes on and on.
Lynn, quick question, back in Engineering. Were you able to fill the Engineer Two position?
Not yet.
You want to talk to that, Andy?
Yeah, sure. So last year, we actually got to a point, I actually got some decent resumes, and we interviewed, we made an offer. And the person we made an offer to didn't get through their background checks and fell out. I decided myself to hold off on filling the position for a six-month period or so, because I knew we were having some financial issues. Until those got settled, I didn't want to add that into the mix on things. So now, we've kind of restarted, now that the fiscal year came through in July, we've restarted that process. And I've got about 20 resumes that I've collected since then. And we're going to start interviews next week. And I have three or four candidates, which I think might work out pretty well.
Right. But it was budgeted?
It was.
For this year?
Correct.
And then you're budgeting it for next year with, like, a little bit of a bump in salary?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Any other questions for... So the next page would be page 38. I don't wear my glasses, I'm sorry. Page 38, which is our Department of Public Works capital items. We have in there a budget, $35,000, to essentially replace the 2006 Armada that we have now. That's got a lot of miles on it, and, well, if you do the math, it's a pretty old vehicle. In addition to that, we have proposed...
I'm sorry, Lynn, it's an '06, I'm sorry.
'06, yeah, 2006, yeah. Thanks to Field Operations Mechanics, it rides.
Keep it going.
Yeah, it keeps going. We've also included some engineering scanning and land use scanning, scanning for the purposes of trying to make things more accessible to the public and reduce our paper. If any of you have been to our office, or if you haven't, please come. We have file cabinets all over the place. They're in the hallways, they're in our offices, they're everywhere. We are paper pushers. And what we're trying to do is scan the documents so that we can make them available online, like they do in different departments, like the Town Clerk and Tax. So it'd be nice for us to be able to do this. And then we have a Peters Rock Park value in there for $27,000. Like most parks that we have, they approached us, Peters Rock Park Association, they've got a great group of volunteers. They want to do the work if we supply the materials. And we're at a point where all of those, you know, great Eagle Scout projects for bridges, all four of them need to be replaced. We have all kinds of trail signs that we need to focus on. We need trail cleanups, we need trail maintenance, sanitation, garbage cans, benches. There's a lot of things that, over time, have now been deteriorating. And they had given us an estimate for $27,000, and we really support it. We're looking for a capital item for that, for the $27,000. I'm also, at the same time, you know, focusing on what kind of grant opportunities in the future we can look at, not only for Peters Rock Park, but our other open space facilities, because we purchase a lot of open space, and we need to start focusing on them as well.
Lynn, for the Peters Rock, how much of the work that needs to be done is the result of the group that had come in and tried to set up those trails?
Oh, you're talking about the bike?
Mm-hmm.
None of it.
None?
Yeah, none of it.
Okay.
Yeah. Once we sat down with them in a series of meetings, and we asked them to remove everything, they did, they did everything that we asked. And I think some of the, we'll call them features, the bike features, jumps, they call them skinnies and things like that, they moved them off to other parks and other towns around us. Nothing, nothing in North Haven, because it's not permitted. But anything that they felt they couldn't move, they basically cut up into like two- and three-foot pieces, and we approved whether they could stay there or not.
Right.
But they put everything back, restored what they called the half-pipe.
Right.
And it's, it looked great.
Oh, so it's, that's backfilled?
Yeah, everything, well, essentially, they had to restore the sides to what it looked like, to what it used to be.
I see.
Yeah. It's a natural drainage area.
Okay.
But what they're talking about proposing is bridges that were put in, Nancy, a long time ago by Eagle Scout projects, which, over time, need to be maintained and replaced.
Sure.
And, you know, we just don't have the materials and the manpower to do it ourselves. And they said, we'll do a lot of the work ourselves if you can get us the materials.
Got it. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. And the only other page I'd like to focus on is page 47, which is the Capital Improvement Plan. While we talked about the Engineering Department Vehicle, there's an item on there for the ADA Assessment Transportation Plan. And both Andy and I have been to what we'll call the DOT trainings, and essentially, you probably want to talk to this?
Yeah. Essentially, it's a federal mandate that requires that we do assessment of the entire town from an ADA perspective. And a lot of that is your public sidewalks and your public crosswalks. I think when it comes to buildings, we've done a decent job in providing for ADA access. But across the town, for all the public sidewalks, not so much. And this is something that is required through the federal government to have. We've got to have a plan as to how we handle sidewalks. At the last SCROG meeting, Council of Government Meeting, Transportation Committee that I sit on, I've beginning to start hearing the rhetoric that the state is going to start withholding funds from towns that don't have this plan. So that's my biggest motivation right there, is to, you know, so that we don't end up in a situation where we can't get funds because we don't have this transportation plan, you know, established. And then the idea behind the plan is to develop a plan and develop a means to improve the sidewalk throughout time. So it's not just putting the plan together, the plan would also have, you know, milestones for us to reach to do, you know, repairs on sidewalks.
So that's all in, like, the neighborhoods? Because my neighborhood, everybody lets the grass grow over the sidewalks, and there's no sidewalks. I mean, it's underneath. And I just want to take my shovel in.
Yeah.
Because people are walking on them, and I've seen a lot of that.
Yeah. So that's really what that's about.
And, you know, right now, every time we apply for a grant, you know, they ask us the question, have you completed your Plan of Conservation and Development? Or they call it the P-O-C-D. And you do that, it's a 10-year term, and ours expires in 2027, which strangely is not too far from now. And our issue is, you have to check that box, and if you don't, you don't get the grant. And the two classes Andy and I went to, they had us raise our hands if we didn't have a plan. And I was one of maybe four towns. I think you were one of more than four towns when you went, because I just went maybe four months ago. What they're telling us now is, if you at least have the plan, you could qualify for the grants. They're trying to tell us without telling us that it's coming. So we're proposing it, it's not that, you know, it's a lot of money for a plan, but we have to have a plan in place so that, you know, maybe every time we pave, we start focusing on the road that we're paving, and what do the sidewalks and the intersections look like are the ADA compliant? And we've got to start doing that. But Elio and I went through a lot of the town buildings together and did a lot of the assessments ourselves. This is a whole different animal. You know, this is the physical features of the town, all the roadways.
Every sidewalk.
Every sidewalk.
Throughout the whole town, yeah.
Yeah.
And we know you're good at getting grants.
Yeah. I want to, I want to stay that way. Yeah, so that's the only one thing, that's why I brought up on page 47, because that $150,000 is important that we get it, because we do feel it's going to be tied to our grants. Yeah. And it's a, it's a one-time fee for a consultant. Does anybody have any questions?
The, just, I'm sorry to go back. The Engineering Two position?
Yes.
You said it's going to have an impact on the consultants, on the consultant expenses, it'll be offset?
You mean the Building Assistant, the Assistant Building Official?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes. So, so right now, Mike, last year's fees, we spent $167,000. You see it in the, it's written on the page. And every year, we budget $40,000 to keep up with what our demands are. That's what we spent this year. So our goal is to bring on the Assistant Building Official. The salary with benefits is $86,000 plus benefits. That's a Grade Three, Step Three, I think it is. And it's, it's essentially to eliminate the consultants line altogether. Initially, we're going to be in that transition phase as we bring the person on, but...
So right now, both of them are in there, the additional position and the consultant fee?
Yeah.
In case we, so we just have to decide what direction we're going?
Correct, yep.
Well, but, hold on, because the, excuse me, Lynn. The current budget only has $40,000.
Yes.
There's another 45 for Blight, which is what's in our reports. Our reports combine the two lines, Lynn. So, so right now, through December, we expended 65 on the two, right? So I just want to make sure Mike is correct, so I mean...
You're right, yeah. So, so essentially, 45 for 48 is our Blight consultant. We're not going to eliminate him. He is there.
But would it be fair to say that if we hired the second Assistant Building Inspector, you're going to eliminate the overage, but that the budget line of 40, would that change or not change? I think that's what Mike...
You were hoping to see it go down significantly, yeah.
But is Mike's assumption correct, that if we hired the Assistant Building Inspector, would the $40,000 consultant line, non-Blight, change?
No, Blight would be the same.
What about the non-Blight?
Non-Blight would change. That's the one we're looking to eliminate.
So that might go down from 40 to some other number?
Yeah.
Okay.
As low as possible.
Don't say that in front of the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
It'll be negative.
I mean, Tim, our issue right now is that, you know, we're basically putting our fingers in the dyke with a combination of five people.
Yeah.
And it would really be great to just use three full-time people to do that. And that gives you continuity, and it gives accountability, and we can just keep, keep working in that direction. Consultants are great when you have a specialty. You know, there may be something coming in big, like an Amazon, so you want to have somebody that will focus on a big-ticket item like that. But we really would like to get ahold of somebody that kind of, you know, an assistant full-time person, again, to help us eliminate that line altogether, the $40,000 line, correct?
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Members, any other questions for either Andy or Lynn? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you next?
Good evening.
How are you, Mike?
Happy New Year. All right, get started on the Streets and Roads division. First few lines there, that's all contractual obligations. They just signed a contract, so you'll see the difference there. And that'll reflect the overtime as well as the wage differentials.
I'm sorry, Mike, you got to be a little more specific on those last two. They're, so they're kind of big numbers here. So why is the overtime so high, and why is the wages up so high?
The overtime as well as the wage differential, we, in the past, we had MERSA, which would offset some of the costs there.
I got it.
MERSA is no longer around, so we have to implement it into our budget lines.
If I can add to that, can I add to that? So we used to monthly, in the wage differential and overtime, reduce that amount with MERSA. We used to receive half of MERSA in the MERSA fund and half of MERSA in the general fund. We are not doing that any longer. So these will be, these are actually true numbers. If you see what we spent in overtime, it was $245,000. So this will reflect more what we're spending, and the MERSA will be fully received in our general fund budget.
So to put it another way, we're going to have a revenue item for that when we get our revenue budget.
Well, we always had it, but we were just, MERSA was received, half of it was received here, and half of it was received in the MERSA funds. So this is what we have been spending, basically, throughout the years. It was just, half of it was in MERSA. And to...
Yes, we know that, we know that these items were removed from the budget at the end of the year in the reconciliation.
Right.
Yeah. Which we never liked, but it did happen.
Right, so now we're doing it correctly.
Okay.
Okay. Next one, we have our Building Utilities. It's going from 41 to 42, small increase there. Our Gas, Oil, Diesel is going from $105,000 to $110,000. Maintenance of Equipment, we're trying to close the gap here, actually, we're going from 206 to 226. Reason why this is going up that much is we're getting a lot of newer vehicles and some of our older vehicles. The cost of maintenance has increased on both, both the older and the newer, because of the computer systems that are in those vehicles. Equipment Rental, it's going from 170 to 210. Reason behind this is for leaf collection. This line is used for our hire trucks, our subcontractors. So...
So, Mike, but why is it 40,000 more? It's quite a jump, actually.
If you look at 22...
Is it 210 or 220?
23, 210.
Okay.
Is that a different number you have?
I got 210.
Yeah, 210.
Okay.
Yeah, 210, okay.
So if you look at 20, 22, 23, we had 170 and we actually went up to 187.
Right, yeah.
As the year goes on, we may increase a little bit of their hourly rate due to inflation. They have maintenance costs on their trucks. So each year we'll just increase them. So we're going to see a little bit of increase. I just want to be ahead of the curve and not behind it on the cost. Maintenance and supply stays the same. Building maintenance, as the buildings get older, the cost goes up. So I mean, a small increase. Custodial contract, that's gone up $1,000. Sidewalk maintenance and repair, we've gone from 20 to 21. And that's, again, inflation.
Mike, that sidewalk maintenance and repair, is that something that's typically done exclusively in the spring?
It's generally spring, summer, and fall. This fund is utilized for if a tree is removed and a panel is either broken or needs to be replaced, this is where that fund comes in play.
Okay, I ask that because as of the end of December, I don't think we've spent any money from that particular line item.
This year, we've, we really didn't have many panels that have been replaced. We've done some grinding of lips on part of the sidewalks that had trees and they had a little lip on it. We actually grinded down so we don't have to replace the whole panel. But throughout the years, we've noticed the grind didn't last for a year at the most a two-year period of time. So those panels would have to get removed. Roots would have to get removed and then no panels installed.
Are you grinding the panel, Mike, or the raised root?
The panel, just to eliminate the lip.
Yeah, okay.
If a panel is near an intersection of street and it needs to be repaired, say there was a tree or whatever, would it be ADA compliant if the replacement?
That we would actually hire a subcontractor to do because we don't do the ADA compliant mat. So we'll hire a contractor to come in and replace that panel and install the mat.
Thank you.
Winter maintenance and supply equipment, we're increasing that from 147 to 150. I know we've been having mild winters, but we never know what the system is going to do. So I'd rather, like I stated before, be ahead of the curve than behind it. Let's, let's see, tree expenses, we're going from 31,000 to 41,000. Reason behind this is a lot of our trees in town are getting old. They're declining, some are unsafe. So there's times that we can't handle the tree, so we'll bring in our subcontractor to remove the tree. For example, it could be too tall, our truck can't reach it, so we have to bring in a subcontractor to remove the tree. That's also used for the town green. We have fertilization program. They go around, they inspect the tree, they fertilize each and every tree on the green for safety, for all the events that we have on the green throughout the year. Line painting, a small increase there, 32 to 33. Training, that's a large increase. We're going from 3,000 to 10,000. This is to bring our drivers up to OSHA training. We have to get that, meet that standard there. We also utilize Connecticut Training Center. They have special programs as chainsaw safety, trenching safety, and driving courses for winter plowing. They all have special programs for that for our drivers. So that all costs money, so I want to bring that up so that we could continually bring two or three or four guys up to training.
So these are new requirements, Mike? These are existing requirements?
OSHA, I believe, is going to be a new requirement.
Yeah.
They're all going to have to get OSHA trained. So this new fund will cover that cost.
Okay.
Okay, sanitation division. Again, first line contractual obligations. Part-time personnel, I did do a little bit of increase there. That is to attract new call-ins. These call-ins fill in for the full-timers. Either they're on vacation or they're out sick. We'll call a part-time call-in collector to fill in for that position so that we're not short-staffed and we can safely get the roots done.
So are these town employees you're talking about, Mike? Are these not town employees?
They're part-time town employees.
Okay.
So we hire them and they're...
So would this be a wage increase because you're having trouble attracting them? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we did, we did raise the starting wage. We've had many years that we haven't been able to attract any call-ins. We're down to two, two currently. And it's, we've been having problems attracting call-ins because a lot of the part-time jobs out there are, we're getting paid more than what we start with.
Getting paid more and not getting up at 5:30 in the morning?
5:30 in the morning.
And slinging cans, is that what you're saying, the problems?
And they're not lifting 80-pound cans to, you know, 30, 80-pound cans.
So if I can just jump in here, we spent a lot of time on this, Mike and I. And when you have either holidays or vacation time or workman's comp issues with the full-timers and you don't have, like we used to have, use a baseball analogy, a dugout filled with part-time call-ins, it really adversely affects service levels in terms of what we're talking about here. And so Mike came to me and we raised the hourly rate because we have to be competitive. This is a very difficult job, very difficult, very. And I remember we had an intern with us from Quinnipiac one year, top shape. I was impressed with the young guy. He wanted to go out and he wanted to try to pick up sanitation and recyclables. Worked out every day. He was exhausted. He never wanted to do it again after one day, one day. So, and yet, Mike himself, that's how he started with the town of North Haven. He started as a part-timer, sanitation.
Part-time sanitation. That was a lot of fun. But it got me where I am now. So started from the bottom and here I am. So, and also, the increase is because of the minimum wage increase that just started in January. So gas and oil, that's another thing, 56,000 to 66,000. Let's see, tires, we saw a little increase in there. It's from 30 to 32. Our major increase is the tipping fee. We've seen an increase throughout the year. Just last year, we saw it go from 105 a ton to 113 a ton. And that was three months into the new year. So...
Mike, do we have a contract for that? What's the, how do we, is there a spot rate? What is that?
That's where we dispose our trash in Norfolk.
No, no, I understand. I'm saying, is the rate fixed for a period of time or is that just set daily, weekly? How's that rate set?
That is, I believe, yearly.
So, sorry, Mike, can I say something?
No, I can jump in because there's something directly in front of me. It's year-to-year and the market's going up. I've just been appointed to a statewide municipal waste committee and the projections are that waste could go to $150 a ton within two years. So we, as a state and as municipal leaders, we have a problem because there, these trashed energy facilities, these burned facilities no longer exist. So trash is being shipped out of state. What it does for us in North Haven and much like other municipalities, depending on the tonnage, we do about 14,400 tons a year. It costs us a half a million dollars more a year in tipping fees because all of the trash, after it goes to the transfer station, gets shipped out to Pennsylvania and other locations. Every city in town is faced with this right now.
But as of this point, in the current fiscal year, we are, for that line item, expended it a little under 42%, right? So we're actually quite a bit under budget for the current fiscal year.
Well, the reason for that is we encourage the recycling. So we've seen a little decrease in the trash because of the encouragement of, let's recycle more and decrease our trash.
And are you expecting that to carry forward next year?
We hope, we hope so.
Yeah.
Mike, what's the prospects that the state's going to require, recommend that you start recycling organic material? I've seen some articles about that.
Well, we, food waste?
Yeah, I'll jump in.
Yes.
Sorry to talk, ladies and gentlemen, but I'm involved with all this, so I want to help Mike on this because he's not involved with that, that question. And what's happening on this issue is that there's an opt-in and opt-out. So the city of West Haven is an example, is a good, is a good example. They opted in to try to have organic waste, or like Tim said, it really is food waste, picked up at the curb, separate bags. But the residents have to pay for the bags. And some residents push back on that. West Haven opted out of the program. So this program has had great success outside the state of Connecticut. But the reality is that in Connecticut, it has not been well-accepted because in effect, it's a separate tax. People have to buy the bags themselves in order to participate. And then there's a big sorting issue in the transfer station, which is a whole nother story. So right now, it's had some traction, but not much.
Thank you.
And then before I go on, I see you have the condo trash, which Nancy just asked about a while ago. Going to 135.
Right.
And that's a function of the tipping fee as well, right?
Yes. So the next division is our transfer station recycling. First line is the contractual obligation. Second line is our personnel part-time. That's our attendance at our transfer recycling center. Then again, we actually increase those, the Connecticut State Minimum Wage, we increase their pay as the, the minimum wage increases. Lot of that, let's see, disposal of materials. It's gone from 185 to 194, 250. Then that's, again, we're looking at inflation there for disposing of the recycling material. Disposal of hazard and regulated waste, we actually decreased that from 36 to 34, 5, 10. Transportation haul-in, we're going from 110 to 115, 5. Transportation is, when they come out, they pick up the containers at Transfer and Recycling and transport it to get them unloaded.
Where do we unload, Mike?
Some of the material goes to John's Refuge in Norfolk and some of them go to different facilities. I believe one is in Bridgeport and the other ones is throughout the state. The rest of the lines there stay the same, no change. So that completes that one. Maintenance, these are my mechanics. First line again, contractual obligations and that leads down through all three. Only line here is the last one, is the training. Now that we're getting new equipment and some of the old ones, they also need training. There's upgrades on brake, brakes on the trucks, computer systems inside the trucks, and some of the de-icing equipment is all computerized. So they get training on all that stuff.
Yeah.
Last one is parks.
Parks, we're only up 2% though, Mike.
Yeah, parks, we really didn't change much.
Very good.
The only thing that changed is the Connecticut Minimum Wage increase. So that increased a little bit of the top line. The rest stays the same.
Before Mike goes on the capital, does anyone have any questions on the operating expense side?
No, but I have a general question for recyc, we're talking about more recycling. Do we still have the same-sized green bins? Are they bigger or whatever? Because like, I'm Miss Recycle and I put, like, I have recycle everything and the bins aren't big enough, so I put stuff in clear bags so that they could see it's recycled.
Yeah.
So we're still with the, still, I mean, the little green?
Yeah, we're still with the little green bins.
That's probably impacting the recycling.
Well, you can go pick up a second bin.
I have a second bin.
I got a feeling Mike's going to cut with this in a second.
Well, in the, in the past, actually, let's see, it's been the past five years I've been presenting the 95-gallon pails. This year, just to cut down the cost, I'm actually doing half, presenting for 10,000 just for trash. Reason why I want to start with trash is we just received our second side tipper garbage truck. And I'd like to, I'm hoping we get this approved this year so that we could actually put this in line and move to our next phase on those two trucks. The next step on those two new trucks is get automated arms installed on those two side tippers. This will eliminate injuries. I mean, it's more efficient, safer for the staff. It will drop it down to one per, per truck. So two guys, two drivers, and the rest of the staff will designate on something else.
So right now, there's three people on the truck, right? One driving, two in the rear?
Yeah, one driver, two trucks, I mean, two collectors.
And so if you had this, you still need one in the rear?
No.
Just the driver?
Yes, by putting the automated arms, it'll be one driver and he'll do all of it.
Do you have the arms in capital, Mike?
And this will just be the garbage right now.
Do you have the arms in capital, Mike?
I do have them.
Oh, I see it, hopper, A U arm, is that what it is?
Yeah, it's for 157,100.
So is that arms, i.e. the two trucks or one truck?
That'll be for both trucks.
Both trucks, okay.
So if the town is considering doing both trash and recycling pails, just double the cost on the 660.
I'm assuming, this is 10,000, so it's one per house, obviously?
Yes. And this is only the ones that we collect at. So these are the homes that we collected garbage at.
There's some homes in town we don't collect garbage?
Well, the condos.
The condos, yeah.
So, I had seven kids when I grew up, Mike, so we generate a lot of trash. Most people don't have seven kids anymore. What if you have a big family and you generate more than one barrel of trash? What happens then?
Well, what we've been noticing on a lot of the routes is a lot of people are moving forward and just getting the 95-gallon pails. This additional pail that we offer will have the town emblem on it. This additional pail that we offer will have the town emblem on it and we'll pick up the two.
So, you'll pick up the two, but someone could buy their own pail that's compatible with the arm and you could, okay, all right.
And right now, what we have on our two side tippers as well as our rear loaders is we can utilize those trucks now. Because we have the automated grabbers, but it's semi-automated.
Yeah.
I need a driver and a collector to control the tippers.
Okay.
So, other thing on the capital is we're looking to replace one of my assistants' vehicles. I've actually put his vehicle out of service. I have some photos if you'd like to view the vehicle. One of the assistants' vehicles. And I have a picture of what we're looking to replace that with.
Yeah. I mean, when we said, Russ never sleeps.
No, never. Let's see, we talked about the automated arm for the side loaders.
Mike, there's two vehicles. Were you just talking about the AD public work vehicle?
Yes.
And what's the one above it? The engineering department vehicle or?
Yeah, that's the engineer. Lynn spoke about that one.
That's Lynn's, okay.
The other vehicle, actually, it's not a vehicle, I'm actually replacing one of the bodies on one of our dump trucks. This, again, will save the town money from buying a full, complete truck and just replacing the body. So, a complete truck would run possibly over, now it's probably about 350,000 for a 10-wheeler. I'm just looking to replace the body, which will run about 107,000. So, this is removing the old body and installing a hook lift on it. And we get a container with the truck as well as a flatbed to utilize, and I have a couple pictures for that as well. Next one is a three-quarter truck with a rack body and a lift gate. We currently have a 95 Ford F-Series that we're trying to replace it with. This truck will run $70,350. This, this truck is utilized for moving all the equipment for parking rack for their summer camps as well as the voting machines. We've been running into problems with having the guys holding the boxes as the lift gate goes up and the boxes are going towards them, so we're trying to replace this so that it makes it safer for the guys.
Mike, I can attest to that because when I was the registrar voters, I would watch them put that in the truck.
Yeah.
I didn't want to be there when something fell out.
It's getting a little tricky with those trucks.
And your guys are awesome.
It's a 95.
It's a lot of work.
Oh, yeah, definitely is. And I got some pictures for that as well.
So, Mike, sorry, were there any more capital before I asked my question?
Uh, just a jet-vac lease. I believe this is the last year, put us 70,000.
So, skipping the lease, which we're already committed to, would you mind prioritizing these for me? There's something about it's bad, I can't see, but it's like somewhere.
Prioritizing? I would say all.
Let's assume, let's just assume all is not a possible, that's not my vocabulary. Let's assume I can't say all, I'm public. Let's say I need to, I say less than all, so what's your priorities?
I would say the automated arm as well as the 95-gallon pails. Like I stated before, this is my fifth year presenting this. I cut it in half just to save the town some money.
Okay, so to play the devil's advocate for just a moment, these pictures you just showed us are pretty compelling. You got some trucks here that are in bad shape. Those aren't a priority?
Well, that's my next thing. I'm looking for, like I stated before, safety of my guys that are collecting the trash.
Right.
That's number one.
Okay.
Number two is the replacement of these trucks. I mean, I had one of my assistants driving one of those trucks with a whole bunch of rust underneath it and I was one of them that inspected it as it was on the lift and I'm like, this truck is off the road.
Right.
And it was kind of depressing to, you know, let my assistant know, John, to know that, you know, your truck is done, it's off the road.
Right. You know, we ask every, every department here because of course, the same question. Is there any state money, any, any grant money available for any of us? Any, any programs that are available for any of us?
The only program available is on the 96 cans. It was available, we haven't pursued it. And Mike, you might want to talk about the lease program that we did. We talked about leasing these barrels. We had a proposal on that.
Yeah, I believe last year I presented them, instead of purchasing, fully purchase, we lease them and pay a yearly fee each year. I think it would have been beneficial for the town to do that just because it moves us closer to the next phase, which now that we have our trucks, we could actually, we could have moved to getting those fully automated arms, getting those guys off the back of the truck and get them, and get a better look on the town. I mean, I've gone through, throughout the state, I've gone to many towns that are possibly smaller than ours and they utilize both the trash and the recycling containers. It looks better. You don't have trash all over the road because the road units can't get in it and the wind doesn't move them.
Mike, share the story with this group about the town of Milford.
Town of Milford, they were able to replace and purchase the cans all at one, one-time deal. So, what they did is they had an eight-truck, eight-truck crew. They were able to drop it down to a four-truck operation and utilize the extra guys on other jobs that needed to get done. So, they went from four, eight trucks to four, four trucks. And operational-wise, it decreased and it was more efficient and then...
It's still amazing expenses and millions of dollars.
But explain, Mike, how they funded it?
They were able to get a bond, or it was a bond, yeah. They bonded the trucks as well as the containers.
Mike, we have what, two refuse trucks on the road any typical day? How many do we have?
We have three.
Three?
And then three, two recycling trucks. So, I do have a plan and, if this all works out, I do have a plan on moving a few guys because I know Streets and Roads does need more help.
So, it doesn't actually save the, the town any money in terms of manpower because you're simply just shifting them from one area to another, is that correct?
Well, it all depends. I mean, it all depends on how it works out. If guys are retiring from the sanitation division, maybe we just not replace that guy. All depends on how, how the phase in goes. I mean, we do need the help in Streets and Roads. What we do in Streets and Roads, we do townway trash on all our parks, our central block. What happens is we gotta, we have two guys from Streets and Roads, we pull them off a regular job and we have them go throughout the town and pick up all the park trash. What we could do is by utilizing the new trucks and the automated arms, we could utilize sanitation personnel to do that so that I have two additional guys to do a different job. So, we're, we're kind of struggling on maintaining the central block because I just don't have enough personnel. Back in the day, we used to have a couple guys just assigned on central block in the green. We're able to edge the sidewalks, cut the grass, maintain the flower beds, trim the bushes. Now, it's, we're trying to have different departments maintain the outside of their buildings. So, we're, we're trying to shift around and see if we could get more efficient and, and a safer environment for these, my sanitation division. I mean, they do a great job, my whole division, my whole department does a great job.
Absolutely. That's been my only hesitation with this, well, obviously the cost, but I certainly don't want to put anyone out of a job as a result of this automation.
Oh, there's plenty of work.
And, but you're, you're saying that they would simply be shifted to another area?
Right.
Perhaps at a different wage than they would make as a sanitation worker, but nonetheless?
Right.
You'd have a place for them.
Oh, there's a place for them. There's plenty of room to assign, or plenty of jobs to assign all the staff.
Mike, I don't see any new hire requests, that's right, that's correct, right?
No hi, new hires, only reason why is if this is approved, the cans and fully automated arms, I get my staff right there.
Right.
Additional staff there.
Right.
There is the request for the, the transfer station, though. There's a request for additional employee at the transfer station, is that?
Well, there again, if this all comes in play, the fully automated arms come in play, the trash cans come in play and possibly the recycling cans come in play. I can utilize one of tho, one of my staff that's on now from sanitation and bring them onboard and he could actually run the transfer recycling center. So, that's the only reason why I didn't put additional staffing in there because if all falls in play, this will all save the town money as well as make it more efficient and better service at the end.
I'm just trying to understand how that's a, a full-time position. Again, maybe I'm missing something because as I understand it, the recycling center is open four days a week, Tuesday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:45 and one day a week on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:45 p.m.
It's actually Monday through Friday.
Oh, it is Monday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it used to be Tuesday, all right. So...
So, this, one particular guy, if we, this all works out, this particular guy will handle the whole center, loading containers, calling into containers, scheduling to part-timers as well as making, staying in contact with the, my assistants and letting them know what he needs, what needs to get done and all that.
Right.
Any other questions from the board?
I have just a quick question because this, this was brought to my attention as, as a suggestion. Would it be possible in the fall, when the leaf pickup process is going on, rather than just having a stagnant ad, you know, published in the local paper, would it be possible to have something on the town's website in real time showing which streets are being done on which weeks? Because I think there's always this, this hope that we can get it started earlier, but then the leaves don't fall. So, then everyone's kind of wondering, well, when do they come the first time and then when do they come to the second time and are we going to get snowfall in between there?
Right.
So, that might be one possibility is to, I'm sure you have something internally that you obviously have to supervise, so...
So, what we did last year is we noticed that the leaves weren't falling or changing, so we delayed it a week. That actually, I would say worked out fairly well. So, what we do is the week that your, your road is scheduled, it has to be out the beginning of the week. It can't be out the end of the week and then we get, and then the resident makes a phone call, my leaves are out, but your guys already went by.
Right.
So, what happens in that case is if we complete the week ahead of schedule, we'll go back the same week, but we can't guarantee that. So, it'll be picked up week five of the schedule. But, I mean, it's, it's worked out that at times we do it twice in one week. It all depends on how many leaves are out there, what the weather is.
Right, well, that's the other thing. If you have inclement weather, then obviously everything gets shifted. It might even be by a day, whereas this might...
I must admit, my, my staff does a great job on that, too.
Absolutely, they do. No, no question, but I think as, as a resident, it would always be nice to know, okay, our street is going to be done, you know, starting on this day and...
Well, then again, I really can't say when a particular street is going to get done because one street could take a half an hour. The next year could take an hour. It all depends on what happened to the leaves throughout the year or what happened, happened to the trees throughout the year.
Sure, sure.
So, it could take, like I said, half an hour one, one, one year, could take an hour the next year, could fall back and take it a half an hour the following year.
Right.
But we'll work on having something electronically put on, possibly at the Facebook page. Maybe we could...
Facebook page or on the town website?
Show that which road was completed.
Sure.
And have a date on it.
That would be great.
So, if you look on it, you'll see, oh, my road was just on yesterday, so they're not going to come back until either the end of the week or three weeks from now.
Right, for the, the second round.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll try to design something for that.
And one other thing, since this just came up on Saturday, with your plowing and sanding, not just of the streets but of the parking lots and driveways for the various town buildings, are there plans to take care of all four firehouses or just headquarters?
So, on that, years ago, I would say possibly over eight years ago, our current retired fire chief and our retired director had an agreement that we weren't able to provide the service that was expected. What happens with that is where these three volunteer companies are located, the truck that was plowing in the area would swing in, clear the snow and go back on their roof.
Sure.
The only issue with that is if you have a storm that's dropping two to three inches an hour, we weren't able to maintain it, it, two to three inches on the ground and we weren't there because we had roads to, you know, handle.
Sure.
Reason why our headquarters is done is I have guys on the ground here, I have two trucks here, I have guys on snow blowers, guys on shovels. Because it's our central hub.
Right.
We're able to take care of this one as well as police, town hall and all the other town buildings here. The other three, that's where the additional staff would have to go into play.
I think, Mike, Nancy, we all heard on Saturday that, I probably knew some of us, even myself, that I don't think some of us realized that the chief was contracting out for snow removal landscape at three volunteer companies, that's, that came up on Saturday.
Right, right.
Yeah, well, again...
Yeah, I caught that meeting, so I was aware of that.
I think I, I had heard that it was something like $6,000 for this one most, not the snowstorm yesterday, but the previous, the first snowstorm of the year. $6,000, that's, that's going to really add up for the taxpayers of this town.
That seems, that seems way too high.
I mean, just to back that up, SOW has gone up drastically this year.
Right, well, it's obviously, it's, it's sanding and as well as plowing, but...
Right.
And you do, you have to maintain it if it's, if it's going on all night, so...
I mean, I'll take the money that he, that he presented, just add another 10,000 on that and I'll, you know, add additional staff and we'll get it done.
Right.
I'm willing to do it, just give me the, give me the staff for it.
So, if we give you the arms and the, and the pails, you'll, you'll plow the volunteer firehouses for us?
He's got to think about it.
You're on camera, I might add, Mike.
Yeah, that's why he's thinking about it.
If you give me the cans and the automated... If you give me the cans and the automated arms and everything, please, I mean, it all comes together, I may have someone to do that. You're right.
Thank you. Any final questions for Mike?
That's it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. This concludes tonight's workshop.
Okay.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.